The Town of Plainville. Established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Town Council meeting. It is Monday, May 1st, 7:00 PM. I'll ask Councilman Wazorko to please leave us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First order of business is a public hearing. I'm going to ask the Town Clerk to read the notice of the hearing for us, please.
Notice is hereby given that the Plainville Town Council will hold a public hearing at 7:00 PM on Monday, May 1st, 2017, in the council chambers of the Municipal Center, One Central Square. Plainville to hear public comments and consider proposals for the 2017 Neighborhood Assistance Act. And we'll get this 27th day of April.
Thank you. Before we have a public hearing, I'm just going to ask our Town Manager to let us know which entities have expressed an interest in this. Could you just tell us which?
Sure. The Neighborhood Assistance Act is a state program where nonprofits, if they receive donations from corporations, corporations can get a tax break for making donations to nonprofits that have been recognized by the town as being worthy and legitimate nonprofits. So the process for the council is to ask those in our community that are interested, and they fill out an application, and then you recognize that, yes, these are legitimate nonprofits, and we notify the state, and move forward from there. So there's been three entities that have expressed interest in participating in this program. One is the Congregational Church of Plainville, United Church of Christ, for the Energy Efficiency Initiative Program, and they're looking, they're hoping to raise, you know, in the area of $150,000. Again, this would be for, you know, corporations, donations. The Queen Anne Nazinga Center, Inc., for their assistance program, they're looking to raise $24,000. And the Plainville Early Learning Center, for their infant and toddler program, $20,000. So those are the three nonprofits that have expressed interest in participating in this program.
Okay. Thank you. Having said that, we'll open up a public hearing to anybody that wishes to speak on this topic. Please come to either podium, state your name and address. Does anybody wish to speak to the public hearing? Anybody wish to speak to the public hearing? One last time. Okay. I will close the public hearing and move on to our next item of business.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to add an item to the agenda.
Okay.
May I? It's under Section 5, Appointments and Resignations. It's to add Advisory Recreation and Park Board reappointments.
Uh huh.
And that will be item number one.
Okay.
And any additional will be under two.
Okay. Thank you. I have a second to add that.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks very much. Moving on to the minutes of our previous meeting, may I have a motion to accept April 17th and April 24th?
So moved.
Are there any additions or corrections? I have a second. Any additions or corrections to them? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Announcements and reports? Does anybody have anything to announce tonight?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Last Monday, April 24th, I participated in a focus group at the Senior Center that was held by the North Central Agency on Aging. That is the regional nonprofit that represents or services 38 towns, including Plainville, with different services and with different resources that they provide, and they've been doing this throughout the region, having focus groups in each town, and having people give input in terms of what they see as the emerging needs and priorities for the future. It was a very interesting process. It was very good.
Great. Thank you for that. Does anybody else have anything to report? We'll now vote on the appointments and resignations. Can I have a motion to appoint?
Want me to make the motion?
Yeah, and we need to add those to people that are going to be appointed.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to acknowledge the Town Manager's reappointments of John Christopher Tatala, Brent Davenport, and Donna Martin for the terms expiring May 1st, 2021, to the Advisory Recreation and Park Board reappointments.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Are there any other appointments tonight to make? None? Moving right along here. Our report of add is that our next meeting, Town Attorney, we are now at the Town Manager's report. Mr. Lee?
Thank you. I have a couple of items. The first is the report on the budget vote results. Last Tuesday, Plainville residents overwhelmingly approved both the General Government and Board of Education budgets as recommended by the Town Council. The General Government budget was approved with 461 voting yes and 182 voting no. Almost 72% of those voting for the General Government budget voted yes. The Board of Education budget was also approved with 429 voting yes and 213 voting no. Almost 67% of those voting for the Board of Education budget voted yes. The turnout for the budget vote was 5.6%. The next step for the Town Council is to set the mill rate for fiscal year '18 so that the tax bills can be mailed by July 1st. The state legislature continues to deliberate on their proposed budget. Their budget decision is fairly important because approximately 20% of Plainville's revenue comes from the state. Up until this point in time, town staff has recommended using the governor's proposed revenue amounts when presenting the potential mill rate change for next year. To date, the appropriations draft budget and the Republican alternative would result in slightly increased revenues to Plainville if adopted. Not that we expect that they will be adopted as is, but at least the proposals that have been submitted to date do not decrease from the governor's recommendations so far. The Town Charter states that the Town Council shall fix the tax rate within 30 days after the annual budget meeting. Town staff will prepare a recommendation for setting the mill rate at the May 15th meeting. Next item I have is the school renovation project update. A public hearing was held on the school renovations project a week ago on April 24th. The hearing was lightly attended. Those who spoke at the public hearing mainly spoke in favor of the project. One resident asked for clarification of the status of state reimbursement for the project. The state continues to assure Plainville that the project will receive 65% of eligible expenses for the project if an application is filed by June 30th. The project consists of two items. The first is to make renovations and updates to the Wheeler Elementary School. The project would renovate like new the building and bring it up to standards similar to the other two elementary schools in town. The Capital Projects Building Committee, after reviewing a scaled-down project, is recommending that the renovate-like-new approach be pursued because it will allow the project to access additional grant funds and to have a school that will not need any additional improvements for the foreseeable future. The state is encouraging towns to pursue updating existing buildings rather than new construction. The Capital Projects Building Committee is supportive of a plan that would result in, in quotes, "the best bang for our tax dollars." The second part of the project is to replace the pavement at the high school, including the parking lots and around the athletic fields. Numerous cracks are evident, and the pavement has exceeded its useful life. Overall, the project is estimated to cost $25.26 million. With state reimbursement, the net cost to Plainville is estimated at $13.15 million. And that project cost can be absorbed in the debt service portion of the town budget without increasing the current budget in amount or not increasing taxes. This is due to the retiring of previous debt from other projects. In conclusion, there is no argument that significant work needs to be done at Wheeler School and also the pavement at the high school. The Building Committee has been working for several years on proposals that would be in the best interest of our community in the long run. The recommended project would address the needs, and the resulting cost impact to Plainville will be minimized due to state grants and the town's favorable debt schedule. There are items on the new business which, if approved, would set the referendum date for Tuesday, June 6th, and authorize the distribution of an explanatory text for the project. This time, I'd like to turn this portion of the report over to, what's happening, Scott Colby.
Good evening. The Plainville Coalition for Positive Youth Development presents Parenting in the Digital Age. Everything you need to know about keeping kids safe through the appropriate use of YouTube, Twitter, Instagram, Snapchat, and more. This free workshop for Plainville residents and parents, presented by Rich McKeon of Sophisticated Digital Solutions, will be held Wednesday, May 7th, from 6:15 to 8:00 PM at Linden Street Elementary School. To register for the program, please contact Tina at the Plainville Board of Education. Her number is 860-793-3210, extension 206. No later than Monday, May 1st. Babysitting will be provided, light refreshments will be served, and registration is preferred, but walk-ins are always welcome. Over at the Plainville Town Clerk's office, they would like to remind dog owners that notices will be mailed on May 31st. New licenses must be obtained before June 30th, 2017. If your dog's rabies certificate has expired or will expire before June 2017, please make an appointment to have your dog vaccinated and bring the updated certificate with you at the time of licensing, or mail a copy of it with your renewal. Over at the Senior Center, going on this month, the Veterans Coffee Hour will be hosted May 2nd at 10:30 AM. This is an informational and support meeting conducted by Rain Rue, a veterans liaison for Hartford Healthcare at Home. This is open for all veterans over the age of 60 and their spouses. Please call the Senior Center to register. On Thursday, May 18th, at 10:00 AM, they're hosting Majesty and Mystery of Crop Circles. This is a PowerPoint presentation featuring complex and exquisite designs that are found annually in farmers' fields and other locations all over the world. Participants will learn about the unexplained effects of these formations on soil, plants, animals, and people, discover the messages that are encoded in the formations, and discuss the possible origins and motives of their creators. This is a free program. Please call the Senior Center to register. The Not So Empty Nest Ninth Annual Conference for Grandparents Raising Grandchildren will be hosted on Tuesday, May 9th, at 9:00 AM. This annual conference provides a unique opportunity to provide information and resources for grandparents, as well as to celebrate and recognize the struggles, joys, and commitment that is made. Please call the Senior Center to register by May 2nd. Funding for this program is made possible in part by the Older Americans Act through the North Central Area Agency on Aging. And the Changing Brain, Wednesday, May 24th, May 31st, and June 7th, is multiple programs that they're hosting at 6:00 PM, held at the Plainville Public Library. And the first one being held on May 24th is discussing what is normal with the brain to keep it healthy, signs and symptoms of dementia. May 31st is going to be the topic of Something Is Just Not Right: Understanding Memory Loss and How to See and Diagnose Different Types of Dementia and the Symptoms of Each. And on June 7th, they are having a discussion on finding and paying for resources, daily challenges, long-distance caregiving, and coping strategies. This Saturday, May 6th, will be the Hazardous Waste Collection at the Plainville Highway Garage. All residents are required to bring a photo ID when attending any of the collection locations. This will be held from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And also, this Saturday, May 6th, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM, the Connecticut Humane Society will be hosting a rabies clinic at the Ragged Mountain Animal Hospital, located at 137 New Brighton Avenue in Plainville. And this event will be held rain or shine and is open to both cats and dogs. And that is all I have to report on.
Scott. Does anybody have any questions for either Robert Lee's report or Scott's? Anybody's all set with that?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The next section of our meeting is our public comment section. During this time, we invite members of the audience to come to the microphone, state your name and address. You'll be given three minutes to speak for one time. I have one person that's signed up, John Kislik. John, you're first.
John Kislik, 65 Forest Road Avenue. Good evening, Town Council.
Good evening.
I had to wait two weeks to talk about most of what I want to say tonight, that's to answer the Town Manager's answer in my comments at the last meeting. I got a suggestion for the Council, though. Section 12, Other Discussions of Interest, I think you should change it to Town Manager's Response to Public Comments. He doesn't play fair, fair at all. At the last meeting, I talked about the architect adding in so many different items into this project, and Town Manager said that it's all approved by the state. Well, I agree, it's approved by the state, but it's the architect, not you, not the Building Committee, or anybody else who's making these design changes. We're actually redesigning that building. Relocating classrooms, entranceways, parking lots, and I saw one article the other day that it's going to give better access from the playground to the nurse's office. It started saying, what do we got, a couple dozen kids a day getting injured? So we got to change stuff around for them to get to the nurse's office? Give me a break. You know, I'm really, really opposed to this renovate-as-new. And I talked to our Chairwoman, Kathy Paglisi, at voting, and I just want this Council to know, I have nothing against you people. I have respect for you for being up there, but you're the ones sending this to the people for the vote. So you're the ones that are going to take the brunt of my criticisms. So don't take it personal. You're stuck with this, and I really wish that you people would reconsider this and not send this. You don't have to send this to referendum. You're the ones completely in charge. And, you know, it's just that we're spending too much stuff on these schools that's not necessary. You know, I don't know how they can justify this amount of changes. You know, I know we need changes. We need the roof. So you get rid of the steam heating system and gas-fired boilers, and the electrical upgrade, and the ADA. Why move classrooms around? You know, you read articles in the paper, and it sounded like the kids are in danger right now, and the place is falling apart. Kids are going to school there every day now. It's a safe building. They're blowing us out of proportion for how bad it is. So I'm against it. I've been talking to quite a few people, and I've been hearing from people, and they're opposed to this, too. So I'm going to be doing some legwork on this, and I'm hoping it goes down like we did at Tofflin, and we can start all over. Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the Council? Joanne? I've called on her, so you'll be next.
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead. Go, go, go.
Joanne, your turn.
Okay. All right. Joanne Edmund, 166 West Main Street. We'll start with a prayer. Oh dear God, our heavenly Father, please grant our Town Council the wisdom, knowledge, strength, and courage to perform their elected duties and responsibilities to the citizens and charter of Plainville. Amen. And in connection with that, I do think we are spending an awful lot of money in this little town of nine and a half square miles. Take away about a mile or so, or square mile or whatever, or two, because of swamp land or nonusable land, and we are closing in on $60 million in our budget. I'm very disappointed that so few people showed up at the polls. I really, I have a name for that, but I won't say it here tonight. I won't say it on the airwaves. I think it's disgusting that people don't worry more about their pocketbooks. I do think that we are spending an awful lot on the schools, and I have brought other things that you have paid no attention to at all, like the bricks over at the old Town Hall, which houses the Historical Society. I don't believe anybody's gone over and looked at those poor old bricks that Nancy Eberhart is still asking, what are we going to do? What are we going to cover them with or not cover them with? Let's get somebody in there that can tell us. But anyhow, please. Now, I have two other things that I would like to talk about, and please don't interrupt me tonight, Kathy. It's the good thing that is for the town. The bad thing was that we're spending too much money. I don't like the fact that the budget is as high as it is. I mean, there's, and then we're, the school project at Wheeler and $2 million, which I think is unnecessary for the high school project. It's really, it's not right. But I would like to make note of two reminders tonight that I talked about last time we were here, and I know Scott has said something about, I don't know if he talked about the concert. The Plainville Wind Ensemble is, this is a reminder to the public. The Plainville Wind Ensemble is giving us a wonderful, free concert this coming Sunday at 2:00 at the Plainville High School. It's a marvelous concert called Day and Night, honoring the sun and the moon, and for the benefit of the Plainville Police Animal Control Unit. They are doing such an exceptional job. I told you last week about George. George, here's an update on George, because I talked to Donna today. George is healing and doing very well. His wounds are pretty much healed. However, what I forgot and failed to tell you last week was that his, he was so badly beaten and wounded that somebody did an awful job on his back, one of his back legs. He has a crushed ligament, and he may or may not have to have an operation, and he may have to have that leg removed. We don't know yet, but that is the talk, and that is the possible speculation about his leg. And it's such a shame that animals are, in many cases, they're taken well, taken care of, but in many cases, they are not. And they are doing, Donna and her staff do an exceptional job at the animal control facility. And she also wants, I talked to her today, she also wants me to remind everyone, and you did say something about it, Scott, and about the rabies clinic on Saturday, the 6th, at the Ragged Mountain Hospital. It's only $10 a pop shot, and it's for your pets. I don't know if it goes, reaches beyond dogs and cats, but you'd have to call and ask. But that's a really nice thing. Dr. Pettit was responsible for that because he won that clinic from some event that he attended at the Humane Society, and this is a very good thing, because I think those shots cost, I'm guesstimating, $50, $60. So take advantage of it, and thank you.
You're welcome. Does anybody else wish to speak to the Council? That would be your turn.
Good evening. Sherri Lebowski, 57 Birch Tree Road. And I just wanted to stand up and say that I'm very for us going to referendum for the Wheeler School project. I have two kids in the school system, and at the beginning of this school year, we actually moved from the Tofflin School District into the Wheeler School District. And over the summer, I met with Mr. B. for a tour of the school, and I was really shocked that I was still in the same town. Just the state of the school, you know, your first impression, I was really surprised. When we moved, despite the fact that my husband and I both have very lengthy commutes, we were committed to staying in Plainville because of what Plainville offers for families, you know, activities, the rec department, the parks, everything is wonderful here. So I was very shocked and disappointed when I walked into Wheeler School. And, you know, I hear that people's concerns about the money, but let me tell you, if the state doesn't reimburse us, they're going to be reimbursing somebody else with their projects. So if that doesn't, money doesn't come to Plainville, it's going somewhere else. So why not us? And if we continue to ignore these projects, they're just going to snowball and become larger and larger projects. So if we're ignoring these items now, how much is it going to cost us down the road? So we really need to handle this now, and after June 30th, we don't know what the state is doing with these reimbursement funds, and we don't know what's going to be offered in the future. So now is the only time that we can do this. So for the sake of my kids, and for the sake of every kid in that school, I pray that we are going to move forward with this referendum and let the people vote, because I think that we have a lot of people who are going to support the cause. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak? Roberta?
Roberta Loria, 18 Perrin Road. I'm also Vice Chair of the Conservation Commission, and I hope you don't mind, but I like to do just 30 seconds of advertising. As many of you are aware, we've been working very hard on a project called Project Peep. This is a seeds project we're trying to do for the town, and I want to let folks know that on May 12th, at the Senior Center, Marge Burris, who is the Chair of the Conservation Commission, she's handling this, they're going to be packaging seeds for that area between the hours of 9 and about 12:30. So any help volunteers can give to package these seeds so that we can distribute them would be greatly appreciated. We have four areas that we will be able to distribute these seeds. It will be the Recreation Department, the Town Clerk's Office, special thanks to Carol for that, the Public Library, and thanks to Doug Lord for his support on that, and of course, the Senior Center. Each packet will have a form on it for folks to fill out, and it's just administrative. We just want to make sure that the folks that take the packets of seeds are residents or businesses here in town. We're not going to solicit anything or anything like that. We just want to keep track of things. And I also like to comment or let folks know, thanks to the support of the Town Council, Rosemary's help, Mr. Lee's help, that we are again having the annual fishing derby for the youngest members of our community, those between the ages of five and 15. It's going to be held this coming Sunday, May 7th, between 8:30 and 11:00. I have managed to convince the Parent Teacher Council and Mr. Guarino, the principal, to handle the breakfast items. So if you ever want to put Mr. Guarino to work in a different manner, come on down and have him cook for you. It's going to be between 8:30 and 11:00. Signups will begin tomorrow, Tuesday, right here in Town Hall, between 6:00 and 8:00 PM Thursday, same place, between 6:00 and 8:00 PM, and Saturday at the library in the children's area between 10:00 and 12:00 noon. the children's area between 10:00 and 12:00 noon. And thank you very much for all your patience.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? Just before Mr. Frangos begins, Mr. Lee, can we put a notice up on our website, on the town's website, regarding where the seeds can be obtained for the project that they're doing, unless it's already there? I don't know, but do we have someplace where we could put that for people that might be interested in getting them?
Yes, we do.
Thanks. Sorry.
You have 30 seconds left, Mr. Frangos.
I knew that was coming. Lou Frangos, 10 Fairbank Street, have some questions. The first is, I want to know, why is the paving of the high school parking lot part of the Wheeler School Project? And the reasoning I'm asking is, there's no interface, there's no relationship between Wheeler and the high school. Right? Two, there's no financial aid coming into Plainville for paving of the high school. And what I thought, this process, how this process works, whether it be Wheeler or whatever town project, is should the high school project be presented to the residents as a separate referendum? Why are they tied... Why are you tying the two into one referendum if there's no connection between the two?
Sure. Let's have this...
What's being voted on is simply the appropriation of dollars, not the... You know, and in the ordinance is a description of the project, but it is two separate projects, but it's one appropriation as it's presently being proposed, and that's a policy decision to be determined by the Town Council. But they are two separate projects, but the authorization is one authorization for the total dollar amount.
One authorization based on the council, council's decision? Because again...
It is the council's decision whether they want to have two questions or one question.
That's exactly my question.
But it is two separate projects, and it's a policy decision that the council decides whether they want to make two questions or one question. There's no right or wrong way of doing it. You may feel that it should be two separate questions, but it doesn't necessarily have to be that way. Again, it's not two separate... It is two separate projects. It's combined in terms of the appropriation.
Let me clear the air on that. I'm not making this a right or wrong judgment. I don't want to put it in that context. All I'm saying is, these are two separate projects. If they're two separate projects, two separate referendums. That's all I'm asking.
Just as a point of information, I'm not going to take your time. Some years back, the high school and the Toffolone School were put out as separate... You know, they were put out together, whether people wanted to approve them. They were separate questions, and as I recall, the high school project passed on the first round, and Toffolone took more than one try to get it passed. So it's not uncommon for the council to put out separate questions in bundling the financing of it.
Okay. If that's... Again, one of the things that caught my eye in the high school project, there is no state money coming in. This is totally Plainville's cost. Okay? And I'm sure you make your decision based on that. The next thing I have for you is for the council, I'm sorry. You have stated that if the state funding reduce... If state funding was reduced, the Wheeler School Project would have to be reassessed. Based on that, has any contingency plan for the Wheeler School Project been looked at? And the reason that came up, and that just came up this past week, is I'm going to... My last question will tie into this. One of my last questions will tie into that. I get the daily... The Hartford Courier Daily, and it seems every time you open up the paper now, every day, there's mismatch of funds. The latest is $420 million of revenue unaccounted for, and I'm saying, okay, that's... I know this has happened statewide. It doesn't impact... It impacts Plainville, but the whole state. But again, I'm saying, and that'll be one of my last questions, is I want to make sure that we're going to have those funds available, and if it's not available, I would think that a secondary plan is put into place. That's the reason in my question, and hasn't been looked at.
Well, it has been the council's position all throughout this process, that if that 65% reimbursement is not there, that the project's not going forward. And at that point in time, certainly, all the parties need to reconvene and talk about what the next steps are. But everybody is aware of that, that if that happens, there will be further discussion about it.
Okay, thank you. Tied into that also was... This was a statement made in conclusion of one of the town meetings by Mr. Lee, which caught me a little off guard, because I did not know it was a negative. I just didn't know. What is the length, the projected length of time for the completion of the Wheeler Project? And there's a reason I'm asking that question.
I don't know. I know that they're going to do a bulk of work during the summertime, but parts of it are going to be during the school year. So Robert, would you have an 18-month or two-year timeframe?
Probably two years.
Two years.
Now, the construction, if approved in June, construction wouldn't begin until next year. I mean, it has to be designed, it has, you know, it has to go through, you know, a review process. So construction would not begin. It would be bid probably over the winter time, and construction wouldn't begin until next, you know, summer. And, you know, it is phased so that it could be done during the school year, but so we're probably talking, you know, at least two years from when it's... If it's approved on June 6th. Of course, the payment of it is stretched out longer than that. The first impact would not happen until fiscal year 19, and it would be done in phases as well. The second would be in fiscal year 21. So if it is approved, you know, the actual paying of the bonds, you know, there wouldn't be permanent borrowing for, you know, for at least, you know, it would be done in phases as well.
Yeah, thank you. Now, the reason I asked that question was, sitting in the back of the room, I thought this was a one-year project. Now, and I'm not saying it's wrong, it's two years. It's just I thought it was a one-year now, a two-year. Now, the reason I asked that question is, you're setting aside funds for a project. Little I know about construction, maybe Mr. Carrier could tie into this, all right? As time goes on, costs go up. What if we don't have enough money? What if there's an increase in costs of the project? How does the town fund that? And I'm not saying it's going to happen. It's just questions on my part.
The project budget itself does have estimates in there for escalation and for contingency. So that's what we hire the consultants for, especially ONG, as the construction manager at risk. They have factored in to the proposals and the appropriation that's being considered, escalation costs with respect to this project and the fact that it's going to be over... The construction process is going to be over a length of time. This is not unusual for projects, you know, to begin with. This is a normal course of action.
Thank you. And this is the last I promise. As I mentioned, I'm reading constant news updates on the budget in the town, on the fiscal budget, fiscal budget dilemma in Hartford. Again, this is a request. Will our state representative, Dr. Pettit, be asked to present his firsthand accounts as related to the Wheeler School Project and at one of our upcoming Town Council meetings? The reason I'm asking that, I appreciate what I hear from council members, I've heard from the town manager, I've heard from the good doctor, all right? You're going to Hartford, and you're hearing this coming back. I personally, and I appreciate it, and I thank you, what I'd like to hear is a firsthand account from my representative.
I'm not sure about this.
What exactly, how things are progressing in Hartford? Because that gentleman's on the firing line. And again, I want to say this, and please don't misconstrue this, I'm not mixing and matching. I guess a lot of people in the town of Plainville have been spoiled by Betty Bukas, because Betty, I think, would be here.
Well, we have...
And I just not disrespect to Mr. Pettit. I just...
No. What I can say is that we hear from Representative Pettit and State Senator Henry Martin almost on a weekly basis as to what's going on in Hartford. The town manager is in constant contact with them. A number of us also speak to them on an individual basis, and they do provide the latest information that they have. There's no concrete answer right now from anybody. There are so many different plans and possibilities and circumstances that nobody can definitively say, this is where you'll end up. But we do hear from them regularly, and until the dust settles and the votes are taken, they have to convene the early part of June, and there's no guarantee they'll actually finish their work by then. So we may not know for some time.
Absolutely. We even go beyond that, in that our conversations are also with the Department of Administrative Services staff, who are part of the school construction process from the inside. These are the people that are dealing with the state legislature, dealing with the Education Committee, dealing with finance, revenue, and bonding, and they're assuring us that, you know, as it stands, you know, that there is going to be money for school building next year, and that this particular project will be eligible for reimbursement, and they expect that it will... We will get our 65% reimbursement. But, you know, we have... It's been stated several times by the Town Council, and they've stated again this evening, that if that reimbursement is not forthcoming, that the project will have to be reevaluated.
Okay. And before I leave, again, I don't want this to come out sounding any disrespect to Mr. ... I'm sorry, to Dr. Pettit. It's just, I'm one of those type that's like to hear sometimes from somebody on the firing line, and I don't mean no disrespect to anyone. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? Anybody else? Becky?
Becky Tyrell, 174 West Main Street. It doesn't want me to touch the microphone, really, Robert? Is it true, or does it break or something? Okay. I'm like, I think it'll like this thing is like sticking to my face. I'm sorry.
You can move it down.
All right. Either a really tall person was here or something. Anyway, thank you. Becky Tyrell, 174 West Main Street. I'm just here to add my words of encouragement for the Wheeler School Project. There's a couple of things to consider. I know there was question just a minute ago about the high school piece of the project, and the high school parking lot actually should have been done when the high school was done. The folks, the building committee at that point in time was concerned that they would not have the funds, so they decided not to do that parking lot. If you have been in that parking lot, you would know that it is in great need, to the point where I am concerned, as a Board of Education member, that we could have somebody actually have an accident there, or, you know, have an issue there that we could be liable for. So the fact that that parking lot is on the referendum, it's not just there as a nice-to-have. I really truly believe that it's something that we do have to do and we have to keep up with. As far as Wheeler Elementary School, Wheeler Elementary School is definitely in need, and I said this to some folks that have kids there, I said, you know, it used to be that we went to Toffolone and Linden and said, we'd like this to look like Wheeler. So it's funny how after 15 years or so, how things change. But that building definitely has some issues, from a mechanical systems, from the roofing, to things that are more aesthetic. And as far as moving things around inside the building and having the entryway be in a different spot, that's really... It is really a safety and security thing. It's a very important aspect of the project. I think, you know, the need for the building is really there. The timing of this couldn't... I think we're not going to have a better time. We're not going to get a better reimbursement rate, and this is a good time to move forward with this. And I'm just going to read this one thing that is in the flyer from the town about the impact to the town budget. It's asking, how will this project impact the town budget? School building projects are paid for by general obligation bonds payable over 20 years. Current interest rates for 20-year bonds are at a historical low level. The town's debt service payment schedule is decreasing at such a rate that the new debt from this project can be absorbed without increasing the current line item amount going forward. That's the key. You know, for many years, we in Plainville didn't do a lot of planning, and we didn't do a lot of capital projects. And we are at a point now where we have been wise about the way we've done our projects over the past, you know, 10, 12 years, and really picking up and getting those things done, and not doing them all at once, but just keeping them on a rotation. And so I hope the folks in town will be smart enough to consider that a good way to spend their money and a good investment of their dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? Anybody else? Okay, thank you all for your comments. Moving on to new business, we have a number of motions, so we'll begin with number one.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to approve the following proposals for the 2017 Neighborhood Assistance Act. First, Congregational Church of Plainville, United Church of Christ Energy Efficiency Initiative Program for $150,000. Next is Queen Anne Nzinga Center, Inc. for the Assistance Program, $24,000, and the Plainville Early Learning Center Infant and Toddler Program for $20,000.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number two.
Madam Chair.
To my left.
Motion to adopt an ordinance entitled Ordinance Appropriating $25,260,000 for renovations and improvements to Wheeler Elementary School and Plainville High School, and authorizing the issue of bonds and notes to finance the portion of the appropriation, not defrayed from grants.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Comments?
No comments.
Madam Chair.
Yes, please.
I do believe, like, it was reiterated many times, that this really fits well in our overall plan as a town to upgrade our infrastructure as we go. I really do think this is something that we do have to do, and I would hope everybody supports it.
Okay. Anybody else?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I can appreciate Mr. Kislick's comments earlier. I just want to say that we have spent a lot of funds getting, you know, the architect and all the plans and everything in place, and then the cost estimation, I think it's time for the people to vote on it. So I'm in favor of sending it to the people for a vote.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
To follow up what my two fellow council members have said, I actually talked about this with the town manager earlier today, and I think, you know, we talk about debt service, and we talk about... We use a lot of terms that maybe the average person in town doesn't really understand. So I just want to say that the net of it is that there is no tax increase as a result of this school renovation project. The debt service means we are paying less on our, you know, on our long-term debt every year, and as that goes down, that allows us to take on projects such as the Wheeler renovation and not increase taxes at all to complete those projects. So I just want everybody to understand there's no tax increase associated with this project.
Okay. Anybody else?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
No, I am in favor of this motion as well. I think it's going to put Wheeler School in very good condition for many years to come. It lets us keep all of our buildings up to date and providing a positive space for learning. Mechanicals are going to be addressed, some safety issues are going to be addressed. The corridors of classrooms are not being gutted, but they're just going to be updated, and I think it's going to be a good investment for the town.
Anybody else? I would also like to add my positive support of the project. A number of councilors took a tour, thank you, Mr. Bachelder, Saturday ago or so, and we were able to actually get in and look at some of these things that, you know, on the surface, the school looks pretty strong and stable, but when you start to look at the mechanicals, and you start to look at the heating system, and lots of these other things, that is not readily apparent from the outside, you do understand that it's an aging building, that these things need to be taken care of in order to be more efficient, in order to make sure that the children and the staff that are in that building are in the best environment possible, and they deserve to have the same quality of environment that the rest of the schools have in our town. So I think it's time. I understand the concern over the cost of it. Nobody is happy about a large expenditure such as this, but the plan that's been developed by the town manager and our finance director, along with the support of the Town Council, will certainly help get the project on this line item in our budget. Now, I want to be very clear about how this is going to affect future budgets. That line item will not increase. That does not mean taxes may not be affected by other things in our budget, but that line item, our long-term debt service, will not be affected by this project because of the planning that's been put in place. So I think it's the right time to do it. I agree with the fact that our state is in some very difficult times right now, and it certainly may be that we will not get a 65% reimbursement rate. The still will... The school will still need to be taken care of at a much higher cost to the local taxpayer. So I think the timing is right, and there is no question in my mind that that school needs to be brought up to the standards as the rest of the schools are. So if there are no further comments, I ask for all those in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to adopt a resolution establishing referenda on proposed Wheeler Elementary School and Plainville High School renovations and improvements project bond ordinance. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number four.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to adopt a resolution authorizing expend... Motion to adopt a resolution authorizing expenditures for conduct of referendum on proposed Wheeler Elementary School and Plainville High School renovations and improvement project bond ordinance.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Do we have an estimate of what some of these costs are gonna be, Rob, Mr. Lee, when we go out to do these? I mean, we're voting on it, there's not a number in there, such as no greater than or whatever, but I think we need to know what the estimated cost is gonna be, not only for number four, but number five as well.
The estimated cost to conduct the referendum is about $7,500. The estimated cost of, of providing an explanatory text is in the area of $4,000.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. Okay. Are there any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number five.
Madam Chair? Motion to...
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Motion to adopt resolution authorizing preparation, printing, and distribution of explanatory text for proposed Wheeler Elementary School and Plainville High School renovations and improvements project bond ordinance.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on, other discussions of interest? Do we have anything else to discuss tonight?
Yes, I do. With all due respect to Mr. Kislik and his opinion that the, this particular item should be renamed, it is an opportunity for, for anyone, including the council or myself, to, you know, perhaps correct some misinformation that was given out during the public information session, as well as discuss other items of interest that may go beyond the town manager's report. In this particular instance, I would like to point out that the Wheeler Elementary School was designed in the 1950s, and that we are in 2017, and the notion that the design that was done in 1950s is appropriate today is probably stretching it a little bit. On top of that, any of the changes that have been proposed have not been the result of the architects suggesting these changes, but has been numerous, numerous meetings between school administration and the architect, and when the school administration spoke about the needs to make certain changes to the building based upon their experience of the utilization of the building and the way things have changed since 1950s. And in addition to that, those changes needed to be reviewed by the Capital Projects Building Committee, which is made up of residents of the community, volunteers, who look at the recommendations of the school administration and, and say, is that appropriate as well? So, the idea that it's the architects that's pushing the design of this building is completely inaccurate, is misleading, and in fact, it's really the other way around. And the other way around being, it's the school administration, the Capital Projects Building Committee, that are, that are approving the design of this based upon the needs as they see them, and the architects are following the direction of them, not the other way around. That's all I have to report.
Anything else?
That's all I have. Items of interest.
Okay. We do not have an executive session, so I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.